Hi and welcome to this show, this preparation show for our upcoming special town meeting to be held on Saturday, October 14th, 2023 at 9:00 a.m. at the Abington High School Middle School Auditorium. My name is Sean Riley and I am the Town Moderator. And this show, we're going to briefly kind of summarize and go over the warrant that will be discussed and voted upon at the special town meeting to be held on Saturday, October 14th. Joining me today is our Town Manager, Scott Lambie AC. Welcome aboard, Scott.
Thank you.
As we normally do before every town meeting, we do our little warrant review show. And this one is going to be a shorter town meeting, but an important town meeting, and it's a special town meeting. Typically, we have our annual town meeting in the spring of every year. And special town meetings can be called by the town at any time to either address specific issues or important timely issues. Many years ago, we used to regularly have a special town meeting every fall to adjust our budgets because the state budget was in such a mess at the time. We haven't had many special town meetings as of late, but this one's important. There are really, there's five articles on the warrant, and those five articles really deal with three issues. And we're going to try to summarize those today so you're better prepared to be there. And we do hope you will attend the October 14th town meeting. So Scott, five warrant articles, and essentially the three issues are: one is an establishment of an opioid settlement fund. The second one is an update and amendment to the zoning bylaws and maps regarding the property at the old airbase, which is now Union Station, Union Point, whatever it's called. And then the final issue, which is Article 5, is the presentation of the new DPW fire station project on Central Street. So let's get started, obviously, with Article 1. We do need 150 people to be there to get started. We need a quorum of 150 people, so we're urging everyone to get there before 9 o'clock, check in, find your favorite seat. We have plenty of seats. We have 700 seats in the auditorium. But Article 1 is on the agenda because of the opioid settlement. We need to create a fund so that the town can collect and later spend these funds that are coming through to the town, to all the cities and towns, as a result of some litigation that the state of Commonwealth Massachusetts was involved. Why don't you tell us a bit more about Article 1?
Yeah, so as many people are aware, the Attorney General's Office had started a class action litigation. We joined in on that, and it was against the manufacturers of the opioids. That has settled, and the town has currently received approximately $100,000. And we're scheduled to receive payments for the next 20-something years. Some years, it'll be $20,000, $30,000, sort of in that range, but we got a lot of the money upfront. When they did this, they never really created a method for us to actually spend the money. They just said, you know, the towns will get this money. So what this does is this allows us to set up a fund that we can actually use the money through. Right now, we have a committee set up, the opioid settlement committee. The charge of the committee was sort of to get through this first year and come up with, you know, sort of a method of how we can get this money to where it would best be served. And there are, with that settlement through the Attorney General's Office, there are certain areas where we can't expend the funds. They're obviously related to opioids, opioid addiction, opioid abuse, opioid education, things like that. So they can be used to help recovery centers. They could be used to aid in the education. It can be, you know, used to assist families. We had talked about, you know, maybe some sort of a regional use for it, where we could work with other communities. So what this does allow is us to actually finally expend those funds. It'll be done along the lines of how we expend CPA funds?
Yep, Community Preservation Act funds?
Yes, exactly. So on a, you know, annual basis, people will be able to come and meet with this committee and say, look, you know, we have this program, project, idea. We'd like to take some of these funds and use them for this. And if they fall within those categories that were allowed statutorily to use the funds for, and it makes sense, then ultimately it'll go to town meeting.
So the vote at this town meeting on October 14th is a vote to establish a stabilization fund called the Opioid Settlement Stabilization Fund. And as Scott just alluded, it allows us to take the money that's incoming from the opioid settlement, to put the money in the segregated account. And then as the committee reviews proposals and ideas, they'll come back to future town meetings with looking for the vote of a future town meeting to spend the money as they've proposed, which is a great idea. And you kind of mentioned that this money that's coming in from the opioid settlement, the litigation, can only be used by the town for opioid-related matters. Can't be used for the general fund. Can't buy pencils or fire trucks or, you know, playground equipment. It's for opioid things. And we have set up a committee already. They're already meeting. And if you want to get involved, or if you have ideas, or you just want information, I would encourage you to talk to the committee. The current members of the committee, I wrote their names down, Lindsey Wright, who's a public health nurse, you can get in touch with her by calling the Board of Health Office, Amy Barrett, many of you might know her via the senior center, Brian Feeley, Adam Gunn, Rick Collins, Peter Walters, and Nora Acevito are all currently involved with that opioid settlement committee. And that committee will continue to meet, and I'm sure the membership will change over the years. I've already seen some of their meetings on TV, if you watch Abington Cam as often as I do. So hopefully, some many good things will come out of that committee, this settlement fund that we're setting up. It is a curse that's affecting all cities and towns, but this is a means of trying to use this money for good.
Yes.
So that's going to be Article 1. It will take a vote really just to establish the account. And then all those other decisions about how to spend it will be done at future town meetings with some hard work by the committee and hopefully a very involved community.
Yeah, and I would encourage anybody who's interested, check online. They do have a webpage on our, on the town website. The meetings are public meetings, so anybody who is interested, wants to participate, please, you know, feel free.
Yeah.
We encourage it.
And, you know, it's nice to see, like, you know, Amy Barrett, Adam Gunn, who's a veterans agent, you know, so representing kind of our older citizens, our veterans, because it's not just, you know, a lot of people think opioid is like a teenager problem, or a, you know, young adult problem, and it's not. Everyone knows someone who may have been affected, even someone who never took a drug in their life, but had some surgery and coming out of it got addicted to the painkiller, and that's part of the litigation. So hopefully, people will get involved, get educated, get informed. I wish the committee best of luck, and we'll hear more from them in future town meetings. That's Article 1. Probably a quick discussion on that one, relatively quick vote, but we'll answer any questions that might be on the floor at town meeting on Saturday morning, October 14th. Then we have Articles 2, 3, and 4, which are all interrelated. 2, 3, and 4 are all dealing with an update to the zoning bylaw that applies to the land that is now the former naval airbase. And as you know, the airbase has land that is comprised of a small portion from Abington, a larger portion from Rockland, and still a larger portion from Waymouth. So all three towns, Waymouth being a city, have to approve this zoning bylaw. And all three towns, Avenue, Rockland, and Waymouth, have their own zoning bylaws that deal with, you know, the rest of the town. But by special legislation, the airbase is almost its own village, and it has its own zoning bylaw. It's already in effect right now. But the proposal from the new developer is to try to, I want to say, simplify it. If you look at the current zoning map, it is all, there's multiple zoning districts, there's multiple zoning bylaw regulations for different parts of it. And as it's been explained to me, it's kind of hindered some of the development and moving forward. So they are trying to, through Articles 2, 3, and 4, propose to simplify the zoning map, there's a copy of the map right there, and the zoning bylaw, to essentially allow most of the airbase land to be classified as mixed-use zoning district, which allows for residential, commercial, or perhaps residential and commercial in the same building. Am I summarizing that right?
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, and exactly. And it allows them that flexibility, because this is, you know, a very long-term project. This isn't something that, you know, will be built out immediately. It'll take quite some time. And they would be able to work with the, you know, economic climate as they go, that if, in fact, some sort of commercial build-out would be beneficial, then they can go that route. And, you know, residential, if that's more, you know, economically sound, then that's the route they'll go to.
Right. And it's hard to predict the future. And as you said, this is, it's always been talked about it being a 10- or 15-year build-out, if it was a consistently built-out project. And it has been a lot of significant delays, but this seems to have a little bit more potential. And they will have their own zoning board on the airbase property, and the zoning board members are going to be actually representatives from the different zoning boards from each of the three communities also. So we'll have a little bit of, you know, our oversight, or at least a voice in some of the decisions that might be made on the airbase. I really would suggest and urge people, before the October 14th meeting, the proponents from the airbase developer that are putting forth these zoning bylaw amendments are going to be making a presentation to the Abington Planning Board on September 18th, and a similar presentation to the Board of Selectmen on the 25th of September. Depending on when you watch this show, both of those presentations, so the Planning Board and the Board of Selectmen, will be videotaped by Abington Cam and will be available for replay. And I think that's going to be a great way to get information. If you can't go to the meetings themselves, go to the meetings if you can. You can ask whatever questions. But if you can watch the video later, before the October 14th meeting, I think you'll come into the meeting kind of eyes wide open, knowing what I'm talking about.
Yeah, because in this new, it is a new development firm who's taken it over. They've been very successful in this area. They've done many projects. They did Pine Hills, which is probably the most, you know, known project, and local one. So they definitely have the wherewithal and the experience behind them for this project. But they'll also, I know a lot of the questions that people have on it are, you know, how does this affect public safety? How does this affect the schools? What is, you know, there's all those things they have answers for. If you come to these, or, you know, come to the meetings, or even at town meeting, they'll be there to answer anything like that also. You know, it's probably one of the better opportunities we have of seeing something responsible being done out there.
Yeah, as Town Moderator, I'm going to allow them to make about a 15-minute presentation before we start allowing questions, just to kind of put something on the table for people to talk about before we take the vote, whether to approve the zoning amendments or not. Questions I've heard is, you know, how does Abington Fire Police get to the airbase? You know, what's that design going to be? How about water service? And that's a big issue for this developer, and they've said that in some of their preliminary presentations, that that's something they need to resolve about how they're going to get water without, quote-unquote, taking it away from the residents of Abington or Rockland.
Yeah, it's important to note that they know that they're not, they're not getting water from us.
Right.
And there's just no way. But the other important note is, not only do they need to get a lot of water, but that would probably help with some redundancy that we could use if, once they do that. And they're, they have two options. They're looking at MWRA, and they're looking at Aquarian. So we'll see what comes out of that, but either one of those could only benefit us.
Is Aquarian the desalinization?
Correct.
So theoretically, that pipe would come up through Abington to get to the airbase, whereas MWRA might come from Waymouth into the airbase. So we'll see how that plays out, but that is, they know, and we'll be free to talk about it. They know that that's a hurdle that they have to work out before they can sell the property.
They can't do anything.
Right.
They can't do anything until they get their water situation. And they're, they're actually working on that. They do actually have engineers currently working and looking at both of those options.
Yep.
So we'll see what happens.
And if we go with the map up on the screen one more time, I also, one of the benefits that they've been mentioning is, on the map, if you can look at it in just a second, we'll get it on the screen, the darker green perimeter is basically outlining the, it's going to be preserved as open space.
Correct.
So almost the entire perimeter of the airbase. Now, Abington is in the bottom left-hand corner. If you can see kind of the blue line that goes left to right at an angle, you can see the cursor. That's, that is the northern line of Abington right there. And then you'll see another line that comes down. That is the eastern line of Abington. So we just have that kind of bottom left-hand corner of the airbase. So there is that barrier there of preservation or open space. Basically, you're looking at the land that is on the northern side of Adams Street, for those of you familiar with Route 58, Adams Street, behind Coltar. I don't know how else you can describe it, but that's, that's the land in the airbase that is part of Abington. And to the right of us is the Rockland area, and then to the north, obviously, where you see the different colors, that's the Waymouth area where there also already is some development. So Abington has the smaller piece of land, but we are going to be treated exactly the same way as the rest of it, because you can see the dark green is, again, open space. And the entire middle, the big chunk of middle, which is kind of the, I don't know, the shaded area, that will be the mixed-use area. The other colored areas are some existing zoning districts where there are already some existing developments, some commercial developments, and they'll explain that in more detail. But Articles 2, 3, and 4 are, as I mentioned, interrelated. Article 2 is a vote to allow, or to approve the amendments to the actual zoning bylaw, the text of the bylaw, to basically put away the old, bring in the new. And again, this affects only the airbase land. Article 3 asks to take that zoning map, which we just showed you, and throw out the old zoning map and approve the new zoning map. And Article 4 authorizes us to put another paragraph in the local Abington zoning bylaw that simply says something like, "If you're dealing with the land in the airbase that happens to also be in the town of Abington, well, the airbase zoning bylaw will apply and not the local Abington bylaw." So please go to the airbase zoning map and go to the airbase zoning bylaw if you're looking at that part of that land for any particular reason. So it's really a package deal. Essentially, as the way I look at it, you can't approve the bylaw and not approve the map. So it's either we're going to, the town residents are either going to approve Article 2, 3, and 4, or they're not going to approve Article 2, 3, and 4. And important to note, because it's a zoning amendment, all three of them, it does require a two-thirds vote. So hopefully, again, zoning is not a real exciting thing, but it's an important thing, important thing. So whatever you can do to kind of learn a little bit more about it prior to the meeting, I think will help everyone. So watch some of the videos. You can get to, also go on the town website at abingtonma.gov. And if you click on the Town Meeting Info button, that will link you to some information about these zoning amendments. You can actually read the bylaw. You can look at the map. The bylaw is about 150 pages. But it's all there for you to take a look at or attend some of those upcoming meetings. Again, Planning Board hearing on September 18th, zoning, sorry, Board of Health meeting, sorry, Board of Selectmen meeting on September 25th. And I know, you know, they're always available too, but the town website's a great way to start, because there's a lot of information, and we continue to add more information as we go. Right?
Absolutely.
Anything more to add about the zoning at the airbase?
No, I think that's...
We kind of touched on everything we needed there. And then the final article, Article 5, is one that's probably most local and is generating a lot of discussion as of late. And that is the approval of borrowing to fund the construction of a new DPW facility and a new fire station, a central fire station facility. This proposal is going to be, all the work would be done on Central Street, a central fire station on Central Street, makes sense. It'll be right where the DPW buildings are now. The, basically, taking the two fire stations, the Bedford Street Fire Station and the Rockland Street Fire Station, and combining them into one central fire station on Central Street. That building obviously would be up towards the front of Central Street, so fire emergency vehicles have quick, easy access in and out to Central Street. The DPW buildings, the existing ones, would, almost all of them would be torn down and have new facilities out back. When I say almost all, because there is a maintenance building there, right in the middle of that Central Street property, that is the newest building on the property for the DPW, which will be maintained and continued to be in operation. This is a site plan that's available on the town website, and this has been a four-year process. And we've come now to a position where the town needs to take a vote whether to fund this to move forward. And why don't you talk about a little about the history of this, Scott?
Yeah, so, you know, obviously, a committee was formed, I guess, over four years ago. It was prior to my arrival, that's how long it's been. And, you know, the initial charge of the committee was to look in, A, you know, what are the needs of the fire station? They know they had two buildings that had quite a few issues with them. They have size issues, they have health issues, they have separation issues of, you know, of work and where the firefighters actually live. There is no gender separation. So there were a myriad of issues they found, and then they also decided, you know, it does make more sense to have one central station. So with that, then, you know, the charge of the committee was, okay, well, where can we put this station? They thought they had settled on a piece of land over by Town Hall off of Glenoway's Way.
The Mabel Butler property, they called it?
Yeah, and that one had a lot of problems. North School was...
Another option.
Another option, and they really held on and looked at that, and that's kind of why we hadn't done anything with that to this point, because it was a viable option. But again, it was, there were too many problems with that spot. Traffic issues, there's way too many intersections, there's obviously no room for growth beyond the footprint of it. And for the size of the facility that they want and to have some training, it just didn't make sense. We put out RFPs to local land owners within a certain geographic area to keep it centralized.
RFPs being a request for proposals?
Yeah.
Is anybody willing to sell us their property?
Yeah.
That we could put a fire station on?
Right. And again, it was within, you know, a geographic area, and, you know, we were willing to combine properties or do whatever, and it just, you know, nothing was panning out. Meanwhile, we're fully aware that we have some serious problems at our DPW facility, which oddly enough is centrally located
Yeah.
on Central Street. And those, those problems are quite similar to the problems at the fire stations, in that, you know, the buildings are old, there are structural issues with them, there are safety issues with them, and they're going to have to be replaced. And the longer we wait to do these things, the worse that these buildings are getting. So at that time, it did seem, you know, they have enough room there, there's a lot of room out back. We have the police station there, and the concept at that time was, well, let's look at that and have sort of a public safety campus. We can have them all in this one area, and we can do two projects with one. And we brought that idea to town meeting, and we got funding for it. We went further with the plans. At one point, not too long ago, they said, okay, well, here's what we can do. And, you know, there was a very large price tag on that.
The initial draft.
Yeah, the initial draft. And we looked at that, and we said, okay, well, let's, let's really dial this in to exactly what do we need right now to provide the level of service that we need to provide and have as much modern-day equipment or space or needs fulfilled. And we, so we really did dial it down. So we have two really good projects that we're doing in one here. And ultimately, we'll end up with new DPW buildings, new salt shed. The DPW will end up with approximately 4,000 more square feet of area of building, of dry vehicle storage, where we can protect, you know, millions of dollars' worth of equipment. They'll end up, you know, obviously, there'll be new locker rooms, bathrooms, changing rooms, and they also need what we've been referring to as a muster room. Basically, during snow events and snow emergencies, especially when they last, you know, two or three days, and that's not unusual to have a couple of those throughout the winter, and we bring in a lot of contractors, we need to cycle people through. They need to be able to come in, they need to be able to take a break, they need to get a cup of coffee, or just, you know...
They all go back there to refill their trucks, right?
They gotta get new salt, they gotta get gas, they've got, and again, sometimes they have equipment problems. The plow blades might need to be readjusted or whatever. So we need that, and it's a very important part of that. They also need areas throughout, throughout the week and throughout the day where they can actually work on their, their big equipment. You know, again, like you had said, you know, we have a perfectly good vehicle maintenance barn out there. It's not that old, and that's going to stay. And then out in the front, where the current DPW facility is, that's where the plan is to put the new fire station headquarters, which, again, you know, we looked at that, and our initial proposal had thought about putting DPW administration in there. It was a much larger building, and we looked at it and said, you know, the DPW administration right now is in a good location and a building that is in, you know, very good shape and that we have to maintain and keep because it's where the main pump house is for our sewer.
You're talking about the building at the corner of Progress Street and Summer Street?
Correct.
Which people used to refer to as the sewer department, but now, as you just alluded to, it's now the DPW offices and the park and rec offices and the Sewer Commission offices. Not a building we can close down because part of that building are the main pumps underground for our sewer system and evidence. So there's, that building is there to stay, and it's in great shape. And that's where the DPW headquarters is now, the offices is now. And so the current proposal is to maintain those offices there. And the barns, the garages that are at Central Street are basically going to be reconstructed, but they're going to be enlarged, because if you haven't been to the DPW barn, I invite you to give them a call, and they'll give you a tour. Yes, they're in very bad shape, but the way that they park the trucks in there is magical. I don't know how they fit it in there. And I do want to mention, a lot of people who are familiar with the project know, and you kind of jokingly said it, but we've had a lot of problems, roof leaks. Roof been ripped off the barns, the garages. They're old barns. I think there's like a lot of South Shore towns. After World War II, there was an influx of people coming down in the suburbs, and there was a lot of municipal construction in the 1960s, late 50s. The Route 18 Fire Station, I think it's 1964, you know, the old police station was built right in the 1960s. Some of our schools, the old high school was in 1962. And same thing, Whitman, all the other towns around here have the same kind of age of buildings. We're all going through this, you know, growing pain. We're trying to figure out what to do next to replace or renovate these buildings. The highway department kind of does everything in the town that no one else will do. They do, they do the fields, they fix stuff, they do the drains, they do the plowing, they fix the sidewalks. You see them out there every day. Sometimes you don't see them out there because they're in the dark corners of Abington just doing their work.
They're the backbone of the town.
They are, right? And, you know, it's a...
The rec department is...
Same thing, right?
Part of that, and it's...
And there's a lot of maintenance to do for our town to try to keep it safe and looking nice. And then their numbers, you know, over, over the years, we've lost a number of employees. So they're doing more work with less people, and their buildings really, you know, I'm the moderator, I don't want to be advocating for anything, but, you know, I want you to get informed to look at it and see what they do. So they'd be getting new buildings to store the trucks, the mowers, the equipment, and the salt shed, the new salt shed. Can you explain to people at home what is a salt shed? I don't think everyone knows the importance of a salt shed.
But yeah, I mean, so as everybody is well aware, in New England, we have several, I guess we get into December and beyond, and we probably have, you know, ice storms constantly. And, you know, so you see the trucks are out there spreading salt and sand. Well, we buy that early, and we buy it in bulk, because we go through so much of it. We have these giant buildings, essentially big barns, that have huge piles of the salt in there. And it's to keep it dry, obviously, while we're storing it, because you mix salt and water, like you were saying.
It dissolves.
It dissolves.
And that's a lot of money to go down the drain, right?
Right. So we need to have, you know, a good, safe, dry place for it, and especially during these storm events, they're cycling in and out constantly. So the trucks are coming in, and they're loading up, and they're heading back out. And it's a lot. We need it to be safe, and we need it to be sound.
Right. We have a salt shed now. It's not, this is not a new thing we're adding. We're just getting a new structure, because the current structure is...
Is in bad shape.
In very bad shape. And it's something that every town has one.
Yeah. Oh, yeah. Every town has, the state has them. Every town has at least one. And, as you said, it's kind of funny, because, not funny, but it's, it's true. And all the towns around us are going through the same thing.
Yeah.
They're finding, they're finding that they're faced with having to rebuild all these structures. They're finding that they're faced with having to rebuild all these structures. And none of it, it's really, it's not even wants, it's just, we need to do this. The buildings are in that bad shape, and it's not out of neglect, they've done their best to take care of these structures over the years, as much as we want to and as much as we can, you know, we've outgrown them and they've outgrown their lifespan.
Yeah, and the fire station now, obviously, this central fire station is a larger building, because we're taking two buildings and combining them into one, the Bedford Street Station and the Rockland Street Station. What's the plan for those buildings after we move into the new building, assuming this gets approved?
So, yeah, once this is approved, hopefully it will be, we'll, once everything's built out, we'll move in, move out of the other buildings, we'll have them decommissioned, which essentially just means we get everything out of there. Shut them down, disconnect the power, and we'll surplus them through the Board of Selectment, and then both buildings will be auctioned off. That money will go into the general fund, but essentially, it can also, you know, obviously be used when it comes in to help pay down debt, and obviously-
No, so you can't sell those buildings until the new one's done.
Absolutely.
And that also brings up, you mentioned earlier how North School, Center School have been sitting there, and there was a reason for a while, we're trying to figure out, do we need the North School, because that was potentially a location for a fire station? But then, as you mentioned, that project eventually later morphed into, and a town meeting supported, the idea to have a DPW fire station project. And you certainly can't fit both of those on the North School project, on the North School property. So, the town will be looking hard to do something with the North School and the Center School, selling them. I know there's been talk with the Housing Authority or the-
The Affordable Housing-
Affordable Housing, thank you, yep, trying to make something happen.
Yeah, we've been working with them, and actually, we are moving forward with that. One of the big issues are, because it was a package deal, the only way to actually find a developer who's interested in redeveloping those two buildings is to really do them together. And the only holdup on them really is just making sure that we have enough water allocated to those buildings for a viable project. And if that turns out to be the case, and we're working on that, then that'll, you know, that'll all go through within the next few months now.
Now, you mentioned something when you were describing the fire station about separation. Separation of genders, meaning the male firefighters and the female firefighters, which the current fire stations were not designed for that, there was only males, so there's no female locker room, a female bathroom, so obviously, the new bathroom, the new building would take care of that. But there's another type of separation that's important in current-day fire stations and current building code and current health and safety regulations. Can you talk to us about that?
Well, there should be, you know, they need separation from their equipment, and certainly their separation from their equipment after they've gone to an event. So, if they've come, if they've been in any sort of a fire or, you know, even dealing with some EMS things, you know, their clothing and their gear gets contaminated. And that contamination, you know, can, will leach, and so it should be separated from them, they do have, they need good decontamination equipment, and then it needs a place for it to be stored and dried, and it should be separated from, as well as the trucks and the other equipment should be separated, from where they actually are, their office areas are. They, you know, throughout the day, they do training, they have training rooms, they have office rooms where you might have, the captain, the day captain would have an office, deputy chief, they're doing fire prevention throughout the day.
Smoke detector inspections, a lot of fire prevention that goes on.
Yeah, there's a whole host of things that go on there during, you know, their shifts, where, you know, they're reviewing plans. But all of that should be separated in a modern fire department from where the trucks are, where the trucks are starting up, where they're coming back after fires, where they've got to clean their equipment, they gotta clean their personal gear.
So, that's the off-gassing I hear about, right? When they're in a fire, whatever, you know, or in a hazardous chemical situation, you don't just take your gear and throw it in the locker next to, you know, the room that you guys are sitting in. It's a special segregated area where it does get cleaned out for health and safety, because cancer's a big concern for those who work, you know, firefighters, for obvious reasons, and some of the older stations have no protections whatsoever. So, the newer, it's like building a new house. It's more expensive nowadays, because of the building code requires it, but there's a lot of requirements for good reason. Construction costs are up, but let's talk about the cost. Now, you had mentioned before, I've been on a couple of building committees, and you first have that first draft where you put everything on the table, and the architects who have had some experience constructing, in this case, fire stations and DPWs in the past, they know what other towns have done, and they say, how about this? Would you guys want this in Abington, or do you need this? So, they put it all on the table. And the first project came in, it was 70 million something thousand, $70 million plus. And the building committee said, no, 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 we don't need this, we don't need this, and they knocked it down to 50 million plus. And then they brought it to the selectmen and to the town managers, and you guys even knocked it down to what it currently is, and I think the estimate now is approximately 38.5 million in that area. This would be paid for with a bond. It's a debt exclusion, not an override. So, basically, if Town Meeting approves this project, and then we take a vote on October 21st, which we'll get to in a minute, this would allow the town to then move forward to actual building designs, architectural plans, which we haven't done that detail yet, because the project hasn't-
Yeah, it's very expensive, so we would wait until if we get this final approval, we'll come up with the plans that are, you know, build up, that you can actually build from, and we can bid from, and we'll go forward.
So, on Saturday morning, October 14th, we have a town meeting at 9 o'clock. We're asking people to arrive 8:30, 20 minutes to 9:00, get there early so you can check in with the town clerks, workers, and find your seat, and we'll try to get started as soon as we have 150 voters there. This Article 5 would also require a two-thirds vote, because it's approving a bond, by state law, we have to go for at least a two-thirds vote. And on the 21st of October, which is the following Saturday, there is a required ballot box election that goes hand in hand with the Town Meeting bond approval. You have to have, in order for the project to move forward, you need a two-thirds vote at Town Meeting and a majority vote at the ballot election. And the ballot election will be held at the Beaverbrook Elementary School Gymnasium. It'll be from 8:00 AM to 6:00 PM on October 14th. That's a copy of the ballot right there up on your screen, and you can see, it's one question. Shall the town of Abingdon be allowed to exempt from the provisions of two and a half the amounts required to pay the bonds for the fire department and DPW buildings? Yes or no? It'll take you, you know, a matter of minutes to go in and check in, grab a ballot, circle yes or no, and you've cast your ballot. That's on the October 21st, 8:00 AM to 6:00 PM. If you can't be there that day, the 21st, you can vote in advance at the town clerk's office. Those ballots will be printed and available in the month of October, throughout the whole month of October, or just call 781-982-2112. That's the town clerk's number, if you have any questions, if you'd like to vote in advance. If you can't get to the town clerk's office and you want them to mail a ballot, you can also ask them to mail it, but you have to request that mail. The last day that ballots can be mailed out to your home is October 16th, which is just a few days before the October 21st ballot election. Any questions about the ballot election, call the town clerk, LeAnn Adams and her staff is great, again, 982-2112. So, two big dates, the 14th and the 21st. Now, obviously, the cost of the project is always a concern, always a concern for every resident in town, because you have to pay for a project like this to move forward, and frankly, if it doesn't move forward, you're gonna have to pay to maintain and renovate to kind of hold this through a couple of years or whatever the other option might be. I was on the website this morning, the DPW Fire Station Committee has put a lot of information on the town website, abbingtonma.gov, and one of them is actually a tax calculator, where based on the current estimated project value of 38.5 million, you can type in your, the assessed value of your house, which you can get on the town website, and it'll tell you, okay, this would cost you X amount of dollars per year moving forward. And I just threw in two figures, I threw in, if you have a $600,000 assessed value house, it would cost you $372 a year for a central fire station and new DPW buildings. If you have a $350,000 house, it's $217 a year. Again, type in your numbers, if you throw in a million dollars, it's gonna be higher, if you throw in 500,000, it's gonna be lower. But all that information is right there for you, so you can figure exactly how it would affect your property, and I guess people have to think about the cost of not doing the project. But that's why we have a town meeting, it's our purest form of democracy, where people can stand up and ask questions, stand up and make points. We don't have any personal attacks in Abington, we're very strict about that, and it's just a great way for people to kind of get involved. But I give a lot of thanks to Abington CAM, because they cover so many meetings, the Finance Committee meetings, the Board of Health, sorry, the Board of Selectment meetings, they also do Board of Health, but in this case, Board of Selectment, and even the Fire Station Building Committee meetings. All that information is online, and so if you want to get educated about this project, the cost of the project, why didn't they do this, why did they do that, there's a lot of information already out there available. You can certainly ask the questions at Town Meeting, but an educated voter is always, you know, a very, I don't know, I think it just becomes a good quality vote for our community, so I urge you to get in touch. There's a lot of information out there, Scott, and a lot more to learn, and it's a continual process. We're still fine-tuning this as we go.
Absolutely, yeah. Every day, you know, we're working on it, we're looking, you know, to sort of fine-tune the plans, you know, kind of right now, it's all gonna be up to, I guess, up to Town Meeting. And certainly, we encourage, as Sean said, we have 700 seats, but, you know, I'd love to fill them and put some people in the auditorium, too.
Well, we're doing it on a Saturday morning, which is a little bit unique, but, you know, it being a special town meeting, we wanted to make it an opportunity where, you know, conflicted, is less of a conflict with people who couldn't get home from work, some people can't drive at night as we're getting into the fall against dawker earlier. So, the Saturday morning at 9:00 AM, we thought is an opportunity for really a couple of big votes, again, three issues, opioid, the airbase zoning, and the DPW fire station project. Really hope you get informed, we need at least 150 voters, as Scott said, we'd love to have 350 voters. You have to be a registered voter in the town of Abingdon to attend. When you walk in, they'll check you off the voter list. It is a 9 o'clock start if we have 150 people in there, so again, I urge you to get there around 8:30, find a parking spot, walk over to the auditorium, it's a beautiful auditorium, and we'll be there waiting for you. I can't imagine that this town meeting is gonna go more than an hour and a half or so. I'm happy to let people talk and ask questions as long as they want, but the Article 1, the opioid settlement, I don't anticipate a long discussion. And then the zoning for the airbase, those three articles will all be kind of discussed at the same time, and there'll be, I'm sure, as I mentioned, a presentation and discussion after that, and then the DPW Fire Station Committee will discuss that until we start to get repetitive and try to see what the sense of the meeting is by taking a vote. Two-thirds vote to approve the zoning articles, 2, 3, and 4, actually, all of them are two-thirds.
Everything.
Yeah, all five articles. The first one's a stabilization fund we're creating, so that's a two-thirds vote, two-thirds vote for 2, 3, and 4, and a two-thirds vote for the fire station. Town meeting will not be live on cable TV. If you want to know what's going on at Town Meeting on Saturday, October 14th, you have to attend Town Meeting, so I urge you to do so. If you are not a registered voter but would like to tend to watch, you can do that, you have to sit in a segregated area where non-voters sit, but we do encourage voters to kind of spread the word. And again, try to get educated, things you read online are not always accurate, try to go, the town website tries to put out as much factual information as possible. Go to the hearings, the presentations that are being made to the Planning Board and to the Board of Selectment for both the zoning issues at the airbase and for the fire station and DPW project. Anything more to mention about our upcoming October 14th Town Meeting?
No, we're looking forward to it. I think it'll, I anticipate it being very well-attended.
I have one other point we wanted to bring up, you and I talked about this before, and I've heard, a couple people have asked me, October 14th, October 21st, the two dates, the 14th is Town Meeting, the 21st is the ballot election at the Beaverbrook. What happens if one happens and the other? If Town Meeting, no matter what Town Meeting votes, whether they approve it by two-thirds or not, we're still having the ballot election on the 21st, and we encourage you to vote on the 21st. If, for the project to move forward, it needs a two-thirds vote at a Town Meeting and a 50-plus one, a majority vote at a ballot box election. So, if it does approve, get approved at Town Meeting and doesn't pass the ballot election, we don't move forward. If it doesn't get approved at Town Meeting, we still have a scheduled ballot election, and we will have it. And people say, why would you bother to do that? Well, you need to do that, you take that vote. And if by chance that ballot election does pass, there is a procedure where another special town meeting could be called after the fact within a certain number of days to try to take another Town Meeting vote. I'm not saying that that's the way to go, what could happen, I'm just trying to put it out there on the table, that it is a two-step process. October 14th, Saturday, 9:00 AM Town Meeting, the 21st, the Saturday, October 21st, is the ballot box election, 8:00 AM to 6:00 PM at the Beaverbrook. So, we're going to the high school first, Beaverbrook second. Sorry, that's a lot of information, but if you have questions about it, if I confused you at all, please call the town manager's office, call Scott, 982-2100.
Yes, absolutely, and check online, but again, absentee early voting will be available too, so-
For the ballot box. To vote at Town Meeting, you have to go to Town Meeting. There is no way to vote other than being in attendance at Town Meeting, but the ballot box election, you can vote, again, call the town clerk's office for more information at 982-2112. Okay, for a short agenda, we wanted to try to give you as much information as we can, and we'll try to have a very efficient Town Meeting for you on the 14th. Scott, I want to thank you for taking the time to kind of help go over this with me, make sure I didn't screw up or overlook anything. And again, I want to welcome and thank all the residents of the town of Abington who are always so involved, just trying to get the information and asking good questions and listening. It's good when we listen to each other and get well-informed, and it just makes us, you know, a better community. So, thanks for tuning into this summary of our October 14th Special Town Meeting warrant. We hope to see you there on the 14th, a little bit before 9:00. Be there, check in, see you in the seats, and we'll get rolling for our Special Town Meeting and try to get you in and out as quickly and responsibly as possible. Thanks for tuning in.